For the panel select board, our regular meeting Thursday, August 8th, 2019. On the agenda tonight are approve the agenda, approval of minutes for 7:11, 7:18, 7:25, 7:29, 7:31, 8:1, and 8:7. Reading of the warrants, mail, public comment, town administrators' report, then old business, town office update, elected and appointed staff pay raises, and then any new business. And then we'll enter into executive session for legal, then after that we'll adjourn. So.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple things that...
Hold on, Harry had his arm up first.
I know we were talking about doing a hard stop by 8:30 for the legal executive session.
Yup. Yeah, we have somebody coming in for legal. He should be here by 8:30, so we're like to make a change to the agenda for a hard stop at 8:30. That way, we don't pay somebody to just sit here and listen to us drone on.
Okay.
Marlena?
Yes, could we please add a quick discussion on internal employee portal? And to please make sure that the auditor's report is added as a standing item on the agenda. They'll actually present the second meeting of each month, but please make sure that it stays on the agenda always. And that's it.
Yup.
The administrator's report is on there.
Oh, it is?
Yup, yup.
It doesn't have everything you're going to talk about listed, but it is listed as a header. And the second thing you said was for the auditor's report?
Yup, to make sure that the auditor's report is always on the agenda. They will, they're planning on presenting at the second meeting of every month.
Okay.
But, um, yup.
Linda, will you make sure that it gets added? Thank you.
Internal employee portal.
The internal employee portal.
Yup.
Discussion on that. And can we just put that right after public comment?
For the employee internal?
Yup.
Portal?
Please, yes, and thank you.
So before Mike's report?
Yup.
Yep, I was working on that today.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so, any other changes to the agenda? Going once, going twice. Alright, I'll hear a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have motion and a second to approve the agenda with changes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, agenda is approved. So, I will hear a motion to approve the minutes for all the dates listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the adjun, approve the minutes that are listed on the agenda. All, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Harry?
Aye.
Alright, so warrants. Ah, where's my chichi?
I just sent it to you.
You did? I'm sorry, I'm so tired.
You know, as chairman, you can delegate.
Nope, I refuse to.
Okay.
I'm power hungry. Alright, so, for payroll ending 7:28, the amount of $10,555.17. Payroll ending 8:04, in the amount of $11,907.40. Accounts payable 5 on 8:02, the amount of $19,197.65. Accounts payable number 6 on 8:09, in the amount of $22,825.27. And accounts payable 6A on 8:10, the amount of $3,437.10. I hear a motion to approve the warrants.
Motion to approve the warrants.
Second.
Alright, motion and a second to approve the warrants. There any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Alright, on to the mail.
There's a new book alert for a code enforcement best practices. That was directed to me. There is Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns Municipal Budget Workshop on Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, at the Capital Plaza Hotel in Montpelier.
Is anybody interested in going to that?
I have to check in my work, but yeah.
So right now, Harry is. The deadline for sign up is September 11th, I believe on that.
At the town fair, Vermont Leagues of Cities and towns will hold its annual business meeting, and it starts at 1 o'clock. And the board outlined policies supported by the league, and they are looking for a delegate from the select board of the town of Pownell to attend as a voting member. I'll pass that on to you.
So, they're looking for us to appoint a delegate?
Please.
So, do we have any volunteers to be the delegate for this?
What day would you?
Uh, Wednesday, October 2nd, at 1:00 PM.
Where is it?
Montpelier?
Uh, Killington, Grand Resort Hotel in Killington.
Um, and more than one can go. Want to go?
I believe more than one can go.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just put Liz and I down.
Okay. Confirmed, or do you got to check your calendars?
I'm, I'm empty.
I'm just going to make sure it's okay at work, but yeah, it should be fine.
Alright, so, tentatively Liz and Marlena. Okay, but we can fill that out afterward, so.
Okay.
Because if you can't go, I don't want to put your name down yet. Here, Mike, so, right now it's tentatively the two of them, but Liz will get back to us. Any other mail?
Yes, plenty. We have a notice to residents, the town of Pownell, road closure for road construction in Maple Grove Road, August 8th through August 16th. We have a note from the delinquent tax collector for a tax sale list. The board, informing the board that she has established a list of 10 properties to receive a letter from Kevin O'Toole, the attorney used for tax sales. The letters, this letter starts the process. One of you has to be at that tax sale. Point somebody to be at that tax sale.
Do you know when that's going to be?
Does it list when that will be?
I was going to say, that's going to be kind of hard to pick, then.
It's the let, the letter goes out first, and then there's like a 30-day, and then it's a process, so we won't know the date for a bit. Well, go, Harry?
I knew that.
Depending on when it is, I wouldn't mind going. We can all go.
We have a hazardous waste collection, household hazardous waste, Saturday, September 14th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Dorset School, 130 School Drive in Dorset. And we've been receiving complaints of illegal dumping along Lad Road and other places. We're hoping citizens will be kind enough not to dump their trash. It'd be very much appreciated. I have some options worked out. I'll be discussing with you.
Okay.
We have a, one comment on junk ordinance, actually, two junk ordinance, and I didn't count how many ATV ordinances, it's quite a bit, and obviously, everybody here read them, so you will be acting on those. And we talked about the budget workshop, and that looks like it's in from there. Oh.
Is, is the period of comment on those two closed?
No, no. It's still there.
Okay, so, on to a public comment. Is there any public comments? Uh, you two want to fight it out, see who goes first?
I can go first.
Alright, please introduce yourself. And the cat TV is asking that you get closer to the mic, because the last meeting, people couldn't be heard talking.
Okay, I'm here to request your approval of the wording for the sign to go by the new trail, and the name for the new trail as the Husick Bend Trail.
Was there any changes to the wording?
No.
I think the only issue last time was just making sure that we do it in sequence. Pass the policy first, make sure the sign adheres to the policy, then pass the sign.
Yup.
Not set policy with the sign.
Well, we have the policy, so how about if we, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the policy. We have it in our...
Yes, you do.
I was going to say, I saw it in there.
Yup. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the hiking trails policy.
Exactly. And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, we have a motion and a second to approve the hiking trails policy. Any discussion?
Yeah, some of the feedback given last time is, and it has nothing to do with who the organization is, as to defining a private organization and municipal policy. And we've, I thought we were going to change this language. The second, item number two under purpose, the last sentence is, "The recreational task force shall define language used for signs upon approval of the select board." That should actually read, "Language used for trail signs will be, will be subject to the approval of the select board."
Okay.
We shouldn't be naming a private organization.
No, I agree with that.
I agree.
Other than that, there's none. I don't have anything else.
Bob, can you please reread that?
Restate that, so she can write it down?
Sure, lang, if you scratch out, "The recreational task force shall define,"
It's just language.
And start with, "Language used for trail signs will be approved by the select board," or "Is subject to approval by the final." I'm open to suggestions here.
I think it's "will be approved," doesn't it?
Yeah, probably "will be approved by the select board."
Are subject for, are subject to approval.
You make that change, and then I think the sign adheres to the policy.
By the select board.
Would there any other suggested changes? Do we want to approve it with the suggested changes now, or wait till it gets printed out?
I'd like to propose that we approve it with the suggested changes.
Okay.
I'll second.
So, was that an official motion?
That was an official motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the hiking trails policy with these suggested changes. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
With that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the language for the sign that Mr. Rodriguez has requested.
And I've reviewed the hiking trail policy, and it fits within the policy.
Alright, there's a second. Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the wording for the sign. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
There's the question of the name for the trail.
Oh, yes.
And I'd like to approve the, I'd like to make a motion to approve the name of our new hiking trail, the Husick Bend Trail.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the name of the hiking trail as the Husick Bend Trail. Is there any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
You're leaving this?
Before he leaves, I want to point out that Mr. Rodriguez and the recreation committee's put a lot of hard work and effort into this, gaining grants for youth corps to help construct this, and he's done a great service to the town, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The community, thank you.
We look forward to working with you in the future.
Great.
That's right.
Bye, Ray.
Okay, so, Rose Marie, your turn. Please introduce yourself and step up to the microphone.
Rose Marie Pelletier, I have two things I'd like to share. The first one is, wanted to thank, I know you were not the board, it's a sign thing also. I want to thank the, the board. Bob was the only one on the board that approved our request for a grant to get sign for litter, or anti-litter signs. And just want to thank the board for their support, and also the road crew for getting them up, you know, in a very timely manner. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing is, and I'm not sure, you're also the board of civil authority.
Correct.
So what I'd like to do is give you a letter in terms of your, your position as board of civil authority, and then have Linda send the letter out to the other board members. Does that seem appropriate at this meeting?
I don't actually, does that have to...
We're not meeting as the board of civil authority, I mean, you can, you can submit anything to the board at any time.
Okay, so maybe what I'll just do, I won't be here for their meeting, I just found out they have a meeting on Monday, and I won't be able to attend that, but I won't...
Actually, there's two.
Oh, there's two?
One for 26.
Harry?
I think the right course is contacting Julie with that, because I think she oversees that aspect as far as board of civil authority, and that we are the end result if there's any questions.
Okay, so I, I can't leave these with you for...
You can le, you can submit those to the board, and we'll just make sure...
We'll pass it to Julie.
And then I go to Julie instead of Linda with this.
If we're wrong, correct us, Linda.
No, it goes to Julie.
It goes to Julie, okay, okay.
Julie's the one that sends out the notifications for the meeting.
Right, okay.
And make sure the timeline, and all that stuff.
Yup, okay.
So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Rose Marie.
Thank you, Rose Marie.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other public comment?
I'll watch the update later.
Anybody? Bueller?
Bueller.
Bueller?
Okay.
No? Okay, so, moving on, thank you, Mike.
Employee portal.
Yes.
You're back.
So back?
See, you yelled Bueller. Yes, so, in our last meeting, we talked about the possibility of coming up with a way for there to be a shared drive or a shared filing system electronically, so that we can start being more efficient with town operations. And Mr. Walker and I were talking with Jen Hall, our webmaster, about whether or not we can set up a secure location that only town employees can access, where they can share information, archive information that's specific to town operations. This would not be public information, so it would be an intranet. And I'd like the board, I'd like to make a motion that we give Michael the authority to work with Jen to come up with the framework and what the cost would be and all that, so that Jen can get all that put together, and then report it back to us at a, at a later date. Not physically do the work, but she needs to let us know...
Get an estimate on what it's going to cost.
Right, to, to understand what it is that we're going to be looking for, and, and the security, and how many staff members would be logging into it and stuff like that. So she needs all that information at the time. So we need to authorize Michael to go ahead and work with her on that.
I'm fine with that. I'll make a motion to authorize Michael to work with Jen Hallie on getting an estimate on the cost of creating a web portal.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to authorize Michael to work with Jen Hallie on getting an estimate for the creation of a employee web portal? Any discussion?
Just that, I, I'm going to work with both Jen and Michael, and, you know, work with them on the project as well.
Okay.
So, if anybody else wants to join in, feel free.
So, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, cool. Alright.
Welcome to the 21st century.
Well, let's not get ahead of ourselves, we've still got the horses outside.
Okay.
Alright, so, moving on to the town administrators' report. Michael, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. We have a budgeted amount of money to buy two new computers that are under replacement plan at a cost of $3,420.06. This was, it's over the original estimate by $430 for us previous year, it's just an estimate. He did the best he could, and there is money in the budget for that, and it is a planned replacement.
Okay.
Do we know, is there grants available for office equipment and any upgrades like that?
Not that I know of off the top of my head.
Especially with the new building coming up, any type of grants?
I've been looking at a lot of grants. Went on them pretty much every day, I haven't seen any of that, no.
Alright, so do we need to approve that? That's what I was waiting for.
But you've already budgeted, I thought you budgeted.
It's a budgeted item, and it's over $3,000.
So you need our, because it's over $3,000.
Purchasing costs.
Yes, 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 yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the, approve this, approve the expenditure. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the expenditure of funds for the two new computers. Any discussion?
Just a, a quick question. I, I think you already said it was, that it is, it is within budget, but it was over the estimate by 430, that's all you mean by that?
That, yeah, that's all, just, you gave an estimate, and it was over that.
Over under budget?
Yes, you are.
That's what I thought it was agreeing there.
Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Ms. Pellon has asked me to put together some items for procedures and for efficiencies. One was personnel file content, and I think you have it.
Yup.
Yes, it is, and that was, is the recommended list of items that would be found in personnel records for town employees. Job description, job application, and a resume, the initial offer of employment, employees withholding allowance, receipt or signed acknowledgements in the employee handbook, performance evaluations, any forms relating to employee benefits, Mexican emergency contacts, complaints or commendations, warrants, completion training program, disciplinary actions, and notes on attendance or tardiness. If that is acceptable to you.
Does this require a motion and approval, or is this just a, it sounds good, you need to go ahead?
General, I mean...
It's just general, I do believe a lot of, some of this information may not currently be in the employees' records, so we are slightly out of compliance with Vermont state employment laws. Yes?
Pay-related items are not kept in the personnel files, they're in a separate file with the treasurer.
Why are they, why are they kept with the treasurer?
Because she deals with those forms, and that's per VLCT.
Can you follow up on that, Michael? Because it's my understanding that when a employee record is being reviewed or audited, their rate of pay and all that should be part of the file.
No, 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 I'm talking about W-4, those forms, it's right here, you don't need to look up anything.
Okay, yeah, no, W-4s make sense.
Yup, those are pay-related forms.
Correct, those were, those should stay with payroll. You're, you've managed payroll.
Pay-related forms, W-4s, I-9s, the health form that goes to the state, those are kept on file with the town treasurer, in a separate file.
Okay, again, the town treasurer is not a human resource aspect of the town, it is the town's responsibility to manage those files. So yes, I understand they need to be kept separate, they're, they're considered payroll.
They'll know and given to her.
Okay, but, but they can be filed, they don't need to be managed by the treasurer, it's outside the scope of the treasurer's responsibility. So, with the exception of making, making sure that payroll-related documents are kept in payroll-related files separately from a personnel file.
Now, the, this should be an easy one, because VEMR's actually has their own step-by-step procedure, so that's, that's a piece of cake.
For defined benefits?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is enrollment, disenrollment, a procedure for town healthcare plan, and this was given to us by MVP and checked over.
Okay.
Any questions on that one?
Who does the...
Excuse me. No, sorry, burped.
Oh.
I was trying to be polite for once.
Who does the enrollment for healthcare, the healthcare plan?
The new one, I had been, and now she'll be doing it.
Okay, so you and Linda are cross-trained, so that if Linda's not here, you can do it?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Linda, did you review the policy, or the procedure? Yeah, is it, is it correct? Okay, cool.
So am I to understand my, that I am now in charge of that, to do that, so that we don't have any...
Yes.
That is my understanding, is you're, you'll take care of it, and if you're out, Michael will handle it.
The next would be the employee in or out processing procedure and checklist, checklist is, orientation checklist, on employee resignation, there are seven steps, and upon hiring, there is 14 steps, and this is to make sure that every, everyone of the requirements are met.
So, when I read through this, these are the tasks that have to be performed, but what are the steps within these tasks? Is that documented somewhere?
For example?
Well, let's take number four, complete W-4, W-4 VT, 19 VT, declaration of health coverage.
That's, my experience is those, those, when, it would be the treasurer, correct, review for W-4, W-4...
Again, this is a human resource function, so it needs to stay under town administration.
Okay, so, they would sit down with the individual that's required to go over that, and given the instructions, and assist them filling those forms out. That's everywhere I've been employed.
Okay. And so that's my point, is that there's steps within that, so...
Aren't those illustrated steps on the form?
Yeah, the forms explain how to fill themselves out.
I thought they did.
I don't think we need to outline that separately.
No, 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 no. The whole point of coming up with these procedures is so that if there was somebody brand-new in the office, where would they go to pull these forms? Where are they kept? You know, that's the whole point of creating a procedure.
Those particular forms are online.
Yeah, those are just standard forms.
So, so you have to make sure that that's documented. So, let's just say Elizabeth was brand-new, she's a brand-new employee, and you say, Elizabeth, you're going to work with Michael to have him fill out his W-4 forms, bye, have a good day. Alright, would she be able to do that from this form? And the answer is no, because it's not telling you to go online and print the forms or download the forms, or where to get them. That's my point. You might have to have a subset, but really put something robust together.
I don't think you need to go too overboard on, to that extent, because if we're hiring some, if, God forbid, say, something happens to Linda, and she's unable to perform her duties, I really doubt we're going to be hiring somebody in with absolutely no experience with no idea what they're doing.
And no one to ask, and these things will change, and you have to...
Never know.
...update the policy every time, right? If it's, if it actually tells you where to go to find it in the file cabinet, what happens when somebody decides to reorganize and puts it somewhere else?
It's not a policy, but no, I see what you're saying about...
I understand it's a procedure.
Yeah, so they're called desktop work tools. So just, let's, you know, we have to make sure that we have some desktop work tools available.
And there are the ethical conduct rules and procedures, that is, that is a policy that would require review and approval.
Oh, you gave that to us?
Yes, I did.
At the last meeting. So the only question that I had was, do we have a corporate compliance plan? Or program, a compliance program through the VLCT?
Compliance program per se, we have a safety program, we follow Vermont Leagues of Cities for policies and procedures.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that qualifies.
Well, it was, it was listed in here, so that's why I just said, what is ours?
I had a, a lot of comments and questions on the, on the policy itself. One of the issues I had with it is, it's highly subjective, and so I would recommend that we, that we take the aspects of this policy that are not subjective, and, and are actually actionable, and just amend our ethics and conflict of interest policy with it, and not pass a separate ethics policy. I have a lot of concerns about how this policy might be used because of its subjective language.
Could you provide some examples?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure, if you're, I don't have the policy in front of me. Actually, maybe I do. Well, one thing is, it does refer to core values, core values, and it is copied from a corporation. Corporations have core values, I don't think most of islands do. Our core values come from our citizens, which are often not in agreement about what our core values are.
No, I think the core values came from our policy that Michael presented us.
You mean the ethics policy? You mean the ethics policy?
I had gone out and just gotten a bunch of information on ethics and ethic policies. And some time ago, in no particular format, I sent that to all of you. And then I had you look at that, and then I came back and.
It was, it was actually the last part of the other.
Correct.
Right, at one point.
At one point, yes. Remember, we discussed that conflict and ethical conduct policy was more on ethical conduct, or more on conflict of interest, and it covered any ethics. A decision was made to write an ethics policy.
To have a separate ethics, yeah, we actually agreed as a board to have a separate ethical conduct.
I gave you those. And this is it, so if you suggest, give us suggestions.
There are some superfluous things in it. We already have an existing ethics and conflict of interest policy, so there is no, we're not under the gun there to pass something.
I think the conflict of interest policy, we, it's only conflict of interest. We took the ethics portion out.
And I think we need to put it back in. That puts us in compliance with the VLCT. So if I could finish.
I'm trying to track what you're saying.
Okay, so, well, to me, when I read the policy, it's very subjective. If you compare this policy to conflict of interest, the conflict of interest is very precise in its language. These are the four situations that identify a conflict of interest. It's either personal or financial, and it's either direct or indirect. And it's very, very precise about what it defines. This policy says, has a lot of, of other things that are, you know, compassion, integrity. I mean, these are just general concepts that I hope we all agree with, but.
Those are ethical principles.
But they, but they're highly subjective. You may think of compassion as providing free lunches, and I may think of compassion as saving taxpayer dollars. So the way that this.
I agree with both.
The way that, well, I'm really, it's not about, it's not about where you fall on each one of these issues. It's that these are political issues. So in ethics policy, I think.
I wouldn't necessarily say they're political. I would say, I agree that they could be considered subjective.
But they're subjective.
Right.
And that's the larger point, is that they are subjective. So what I, what I think we ought to do is take the parts, what I found very good in here was, you know, we bill only for the services that we've provided, that portion. We do not offer or accept anything of value. That's very exact, very precise. And then the remediation steps. If you have a complaint about an employee, you will follow this path. If you have a complaint about an elected official or something along those lines, you'll follow a different path. And what are the remediation steps and what are the escalation steps? What I would suggest is we put a flow chart together and, and take these items out of this policy, the ones that are actionable, and put them in our ethics, in our ethics and conflict of interest policy, in just that one policy.
So Mr. Chairman, we voted as a board to create a, what is it called?
Well, it wasn't a vote.
A code of ethical conduct policy?
I do remember.
Yeah. And so instead of continuously going back and forth, back and forth, I recommend that Mr. Jarvis submit his, his recommendations so that we can review them at the next meeting and either choose to accept or decline them so that we can move forward and get these things approved, as opposed to continually going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. It just spells the whole process.
If Bob is willing to.
I'll do that.
To do that, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And implement what I'm, what I'm proposing here.
Okay.
And I've already got the flow chart done for one of them, and I'll do the flow chart.
All right.
Do you want me to send you that electronically, or do you have it?
I have this.
Now, did you send out, did you send out to the board my comments? The track changes that I sent with my comments?
It should be on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all listed on.
Oh, okay, yep, 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 okay, great.
I was gonna say, unless you have a different copy than I have.
No, that's the copy that I have. Because I feel that every time we, we, we as a board make a commitment to discuss and approve policies, it just seems like we don't come prepared to do it.
Well, that's part of coming to the meeting is so we can discuss it. We're not allowed to discuss it offline. So it's not like we can hammer out details amongst ourselves.
We don't have feedback. I, I provided feedback for everybody.
Yeah.
Michael sent it out. We come to the meeting and there is more feedback, but I don't see the feedback. And so I just would like the board to please be more prepared and bring the feedback so we can move forward so that we're not just coming to meetings and not making any progress. It impacts our community, it impacts our way of.
I agree with that, and I appreciate your recommendation and, you know. I think we as a board probably can do a better job of trying to be more prepared for these.
I do have my feedback on the original with comments all through it. Most of it I wanted to pull out because of its subjective nature. Whenever it's subjective, there is a high risk that it can be used to do unethical things. We don't want a policy, an ethics policy that can be used to target individuals. I also found that in the policy itself, it inflates the concept of policy with ethics. In order to be ethical, we'll prefer to policy. Everybody on this board was engaged in correcting policy, and we did a good job with it because it was put, in my view, it was a policy that was put in place to do something unethical. Policy and ethics are not the same thing, and this policy says that they are. In order to be ethical, we'll follow policy. That's not always the true, that's not always, that's not the definition of ethics. So I had a lot of issues with it, and it's hard to come back and rewrite it and say, it's not wordsmithing. They're fundamental, but I will, I will send those out.
All right, thank you.
Next is procedures for boards, commissions and/or committee meeting policy.
This was what we were supposed to approve back in May? And with the changes? The changes that were made in this had to do with the hard, oh, Brian, what was it?
There was supposed to be about hard stops and about timing people, I believe.
Correct.
Like limiting the amount of.
Right, and, and that we as a board have to vote. Hold on, let me see.
About a majority, if we're gonna go over the hard stop, you have to have so many board members agree to it.
Right, and then a supermajority for after 10 o'clock or up to 10 o'clock or something like that. I'm just trying to find where it is.
Meetings may be recessed at two a time. These rules may be amended by two-thirds vote. Uh, that might not. That was in section 10. But that's under organization, I'm sorry. My bad. Where was it?
I don't know. That doesn't look like the right copy.
I was gonna say, I have the copy we originally handed out to. See, you were just talking about being prepared, and here we are, not prepared.
Some doesn't have the times.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it. Yeah, it's not in there.
No, it's not.
It wasn't added after our brainstorm session.
It was not. Do we want to?
Or the right copy wasn't. I have my thumb drive with me, Michael. We can always throw it into your computer and we'll see if we can find it.
So we'll kick this one, we'll kick this one down the road then until we can
Yep.
Get a new one printed out, so postpone that one.
I'll get it for you, sir.
All right, thank you, Michael. So, on to old business then, for town office update.
Now, I, I have Joyce with me. So would you like to, do you wish to hear from me first, or would you like to hear from the historic society?
Um, I, does the board have a preference?
No, whatever you guys want.
You're already standing, you can go first.
Okay, all right. What I did was, I made a copy for each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's put them together. You have, you all got one? Okay. All right. Okay, so first of all, preferred building systems. I sent the copy of the updated plan for both main floor and the walkout foundation. And their engineering team is working on the plan. And I'm anticipating having it within the week and their final number. So, and then the testing of the well. Ronnie Bizan agreed to check the existing driven well used by the Bartell Lodge. And Ron found out that the well is 210 feet deep and it has a pump. And we were advised, we needed three different tests. So I purchased those kits, which I can send you guys the bill for later.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so it's three different kits, kits AC and RA, and it explains what they're for. And also Ron came up with the idea that we probably needed to test for PFOA. So.
Good idea.
Yeah, so, we're also going to be doing that test this coming Monday at 9 o'clock. And I, I contacted the Vermont Department of Environmental Protection, which, conservation, sorry. And so they arranged for the test, which is saving us quite a lot of money. And so they will be there also Monday at 9 o'clock. Then, we needed to have an address. So I contacted Priscilla Maxon, our 911 coordinator. And Priscilla, it took her a bit of research, but she came up with the 911 address for Lynn's proposed town hall, which is 511 Center Street. And I once again met with Michael Connors. He came down here. And we walked the route again, went back through the schoolhouse. And he advised me all the prep work that was required to get the building in condition to move it. And like, for instance, removing the water and the oil tanks in the schoolhouse foundation. And for that reason, I contacted Michael Lawler, who is superintendent of the Southwest Vermont Career Development Center, to see if we could get vocational students to help prep for the schoolhouse move. And Michael said the students weren't committed to building a Habitat for Humanity house. However, they may have some time, so he'll get back to me within two weeks. It would be a super project for them to be involved with because seeing a building move is always very fascinating for people. And then I met with Michael Gardner, our new town zoning administ, inspector. And I went over the proposed building plan with him. And so, and he's a great resource to have.
Pauline and I have a question in regards to moving the building. Do you have an estimate on how long the move itself would take?
Probably a day.
Well, I was just wondering, is there any way we could try to coordinate setting up some cameras and do some time lapse video of it?
Oh, absolutely. I've already talked to Carl Villanova.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking the public might find something like that pretty interesting to watch a time lapse, because we're gonna be doing updates on the website.
Right, well, Carl actually is coming Monday. And so I've asked him if he would work with this whole proposed project to do film the whole thing, from beginning to end. And of course, he has a drone.
Oh, nice.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Right, so.
Thank you.
And he's the same Carl that gave us the photograph and the frame, so.
Right.
Just in case anybody was wondering.
I've seen some, some of the things he's done online is pretty cool.
It is.
He's very good, so.
Awesome, thank you, Pauline.
All right, Joyce.
Okay.
Joyce. Joyce, Health and Historical Society. And I just wanted to update you and the public on schoolhouse number eight. And the Powell Historical Society has received the quick claim deed for the school, and it's been recorded. So we're now the proud owners. And we are so happy that we have saved this historic one-room schoolhouse. Well, looking over the deed, I got some really cool information you don't even know about this one. Looking over the deed, we picked up on a reference to book seven, page 335 on the town land records. And with the help of Linda, which being, she's a little bit taller than the rest of us, she got the book down. And we looked it up, and upon reading this quick claim deed, we realized that it states that Askel Gibbs was turning over all rights to the schoolhouse eight, built by him, to the trustees in consideration for $5.
Goodness.
I know. But here comes the good part. It was signed by Mr. Gibbs and dated February 17, 1813.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so that makes this wonderful piece of history over there 206 years old.
Wow, that's amazing.
Aren't we glad we're saving it?
Oh.
That is one big piece of history. So, we're excited about donating this big chunk of history to the, the school, to the town. It will be used as the selectmen's slash meeting slash voting room in the new town hall. We're equally excited about having the Powell History Center in the basement of the school, and we look forward to our new home. The opportunity to expand our Powell history and genealogy collections, along with being able to offer historic presentations, events, and genealogy classes, workshops. This will bring people to Powell, as we all know about the National Archives and how many people brought into Pittsfield, Massachusetts when it was there.
I just learned where that was today, when I went to the, when I was, well, where I was on Conti Drive. And they said, is it still there or it's not there anymore? It's a giant building. Where did they put all the stuff?
But we're excited, because this will bring people to Powell, because as we've all talked about, Powell was a gateway. And people from Rhode Island, Connecticut, Massachusetts, they came through here. Some stayed, some moved on. But a lot of people throughout the United States and Canada and all over, we get even foreign requests, have some roots here. It's amazing. I mean, even my husband couldn't believe that he found roots here, even though he never knew that, but anyway. So anyway, we're excited about that. It'll bring people to Powell, and it'll put us on the map, which is good. And we strongly feel people coming to our History Center will be able to not only, we will not only be able to help them with their research, but we will be able to introduce them to Powell by offering them a self-guided scenic map while they're there so that they may see the beautiful side of Powell. We all know that our back roads are just magnificent. So we can do a scenic map and get them out there, get them to enjoy it, feel the, feel the history and see the beauty. And that will result in a need for places to stay, places to eat, places to shop.
Go hike on our new hiking trail.
This is, that's right, that's right. Our hiking trail is a place, it's going to be a destination. We can do this. So this is all very exciting. But, before this piece of history is moved on to the town and into its new place of honor, facing up Center Street and welcoming visitors, the Historical Society wants to share the school with some of the former students and maybe some of the former teachers. And what better way of doing it than for us to host a class reunion? May I share the flyer? I have got a flyer.
Is the board okay with it?
Share the flyer?
I'm okay with it.
I will read it to you, okay, and then we'll pick it up. Class reunion, open house at school number eight. 2758 North Powell Road, Powell Center. Sunday, August 25th, 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Presented by the Powell Historical Society, and all are welcome. Stop by, stay as long as you like, and help us celebrate this historic one-room schoolhouse. Meet and mingle with former students, hear their memories, and join in the fun. Family names such as Campbell, Lampman, Madison, Meyer, Niles, Towsley, Church, Montgomery, Sweet, and so many more attended school number eight, from the 1800s to the 1960s. Only those walls could talk. Bring your stories, your photos, and your curiosity. There's so much to enjoy and to learn about our little one-room schoolhouse. There will be handicap parking behind the one-room schoolhouse. Others, we ask that they park by the cemetery. Others, we ask that they park by the cemetery and follow the signs to walk to the school on the historic road. The students walked, as we all remember, huh? The students walked. And while you walk down, stop and listen, because you just might hear echoes of children's laughter when they're out for recess. And refreshments will be served. If you have any questions, any pictures, any stories, anything you want to talk to me about, you can call me, eight-two-three-five-five-three-six. And we hope everybody will be there, and we want to hold this up. I don't know, can you zero in on this?
Uh, Josh, would you be willing to zoom in on this?
Can we make sure we send that to Jen Hall?
Sure, you can have that copy.
Thank you.
And then, uh, will you send a copy of that to Jen Hall?
Um, Joyce, I'm guessing that you're sending that to?
I'm sorry, Bob?
I was gonna say if there's a soft copy.
Do you have an electronic copy of that?
I do, I do, I do.
It'd probably be good for posting.
That got me in trouble fifty-six years ago when I said that, "I do." But he's watching tonight, he's watching tonight, I didn't mean that, sweetie.
She's a good guy, buddy.
Oh, you're in trouble now. So, will you send the copy of the soft copy?
Who should I send that to?
Send it to Michael, and Michael will record it on too.
Okay, Michael, and then, um...
I'll take a copy too, because I'll post it on my Facebook page.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you just send it to the whole board?
Everybody, sure, okay.
For, for those of us who don't know really how to use Facebook.
Okay, cool.
And send a copy to Patricia at the banner, maybe she can try to finagle.
Maybe I can give Patricia the banner. Maybe she should take that flyer then, huh? Do you want that flyer?
Uh, Michael has it.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm gonna email it to them.
You have a note on it, do you need the note?
Oh, you want your note back?
Thanks, Patricia.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other updates, anything else you want to fill us in on, or?
Not right now, but, you know.
Next week?
Maybe next week.
Tune in next week, yeah.
Alright, exciting, thank you.
I'm taking my ring, I'm leaving, so be prepared for a thunderstorm.
GunlowPauline@comcast.net.
Is there a space underscore period between Gunlow and Pauline?
No, it's simple.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, good.
Thank you, ladies.
Bye, guys.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too.
Well, we made better progress, a lot faster than I thought we would, so.
That's okay. Uh, Michael's laptop's here, so we might be able to fix that policy and get it printed.
Is there anything else here, elected and appointed?
Staff pay raises.
Staff pay raises.
Oh, yeah, that's right, too. Oh, we ended up skipping over that.
That's okay, I've got all the information here.
I was gonna say, we can go back to it, we can do it right now.
Well, we did the town hall, they, oh, and then, then...
Yeah, I skipped it.
Um, so there's a proposal to increase the treasurer's current salary of thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars plus benefits to thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. There's a proposal to increase the town clerk's stip- uh, salaried stipend from twelve thousand dollars plus the fees that she receives and benefits, including retirement match, to thirteen thousand dollars for a stipend. There was nothing for the listers, and...
I think those are the only two elected positions that...
There was a, there was a request for a slight increase for the auditors. Um, but I think that needs to be reconsidered now that we have three full auditors. The auditor's request was to go from thirty-seven hundred dollars to four thousand.
Yeah, that was because there were only two of them.
Well, that was because there was only one of them at the time.
Oh, that's true.
So now there's three of them, so that, we, we need to reconsider that, um...
Is this something that we need to work on when we're working on our budget that we're gonna pass?
Is it in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a proposed, it, it wasn't, it wasn't a line item that was specifically voted on by the voters.
It hasn't actually been approved by any of the four.
No.
No.
That's where, that's where I'm coming from.
No, we just have to say yes, we're gonna honor it, or no, we're not.
It's in the budget, and the budget approved by the, by the town people.
No, but his point is that the, these specific pay raises, pay rates aren't defined in the budget. Just the total amount that you would spend over the year was defined in the budget, I think Harry's point is.
That's where I'm at.
Right.
I don't think, if you're all fair enough to the, the positions in the town ledger that actually states that what's been passed.
Look for a copy of the town ledger?
He beat you to it?
But the budget, the pay raises were in the budget. But if the board voted on those pay raises, being in the budget, they were put in the budget, the budget was passed. You look at the line item for the treasurer, and how important those salaries are in there. Might be a bit of, bit of an issue if you...
No, I, we, we've already checked with the VLCT. And the VLCT, the VLCT's response was that the budget is just a guideline. It's up to the board to determine, it's just a plan, it's an estimate, and it's ultimately up to the board to decide whether or not to increase the salary specific to the elected officials.
So, the proposed budget for the treasurer for salary and wages for twenty nineteen, or for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was thirty-one thousand eight hundred.
Correct.
And the actual for the year before was thirty thousand, so it, it is in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
When then, the proposed budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty has a thousand dollar increase of thirty-two thousand eight hundred, so...
Well, that's all I, that's what I'm looking for, is clarify the case.
Yep, no, and, yeah, so it is in there.
Right, but per the VLCT, because it wasn't a specific article for each item.
It wasn't a specific article, but it was listed.
It's not legally binding.
But it's in there, that, that's what, that's what I want to clarify.
I get, I totally get your point, that technically it's not legally binding.
I'm just, yeah, just re, I'm just reading what the VLCT sent.
But seeing as it was already budgeted and the voters approved it, then I feel that...
Well, wait, 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 wait. The voters, you, you can't say the voters approved it. I don't think any single person here could say that we passed the budget knowing exactly what every single line item in the budget was.
Well, we, we put the book out.
Correct.
The book goes to the voters, they have the opportunity to review it, and the budget passed. To my knowledge, these books were, were delivered in time.
Yeah.
Those were at, those were distributed at the town, at the town meeting.
I just have an issue with elected officials getting pay raises when the community is paying for elected officials' benefits. You know, we have people that work way more than forty hours per week.
Yes.
They have to work this, way more hours to obtain their salaries, which in some cases are less than what elected officials are receiving. And they work, to me, they work very, very hard, and they're required to work forty hours.
I, I completely agree that, I, I think our, our, our staff for the town are underpaid. And that's something that we can try to address when we go to craft our next budget, and try to budget more money, but we also have to be mindful of taxpayers as well. However, there, there, it was already figured into the budget for pay raises. Whether the voters read the book or not, the voters approved the budget.
Well, then make a motion then.
So I make a motion that we approve the pay raises that were already approved in the budget.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the pay raises, is there any further discussion?
Um, I just say, it's just a question of clarification. When we say the auditors, the auditors are, uh, we have three, and they're thirty-seven hundred stipend apiece?
The auditors?
No, that's a total budget.
That was thirty-seven total.
That's total.
Okay, so, and, and we actually have the, uh, that line item of the budget was actually four grand.
Yes.
Okay, alright, alright.
Right.
That was my only question.
So I mean, so there's...
If it's up for discussion, I would say that we take the two thousand dollars that was allocated in the, in the overall budget and allocate that two thousand dollars into the auditor's line item, now that there's three. Again, I feel that the treasurer's salary is extremely high for a treasurer. And we just provided the town clerk with benefits that the community is paying sixty-five percent of her insurance premium.
Pauline, a quick question, what, uh, what two thousand are you talking about?
The thousand dollars that, for the treasurer's and the thousand dollar request to increase the town clerk.
Yes, but we all, so all agree that the town clerk was owed really insurance because of the hours that she put in prior to and everything else.
Not according to what was sent up to the VLCT for all the information.
Well, the information that we were given, when we had our...
And when it was sent up to the VLCT to review, it didn't, it, that wasn't, that wasn't a just, a justifiable reasoning. We, we chose to do it because it was the right thing to do, because of what the language of the old personnel policy stated. It had nothing to do with the number of hours.
Yeah, it did, that's what we based it on, was the number of hours worked.
Yeah, the only thing that precluded her from getting insurance was the date.
Was the date.
Correct. Per the old policy, per the hours.
She met the criteria for the public.
So... We reviewed all that for our policy at the time, when all of her past...
Correct.
Hours statements that she turned in.
But because it wasn't a continuous basis at the time, it wasn't continuous. And that's how the policy read, it had to be continuous. So it wasn't consistent until she moved into, she was not elected. So she didn't qualify because she wasn't elected. She was the assistant town clerk appointed by the current town, by the previous town clerk. Her hours didn't qualify for benefits because she was a non-elected official. When she became elected in March of that year, that should have qualified her, but the language in the personnel policy disqualified her. We fixed that to help her qualify. It wasn't that we owed it because she never qualified to begin with, but she...
Just to be clear, we didn't fix it to help her qualify. We fixed it to fix, we fixed, we fixed a policy that was done.
Regardless whether...
Potatoes are potatoes.
Regardless what the, regardless what the motivations were, we changed the policy, our town clerk is not eligible for health insurance, which she is participating in.
Correct.
We all agree on that.
Yes, yes.
The question at hand now, which there's a motion and a second, we're in discussion as to whether or not approve the raises.
Correct. And to me, how much, what, when we pay sixty-five percent of the insurance premiums, what, what does that equate to per year? Any...
Top of my head, I couldn't tell.
Is it somewhere where you can look at it?
That, oh, at least that's what was budgeted for. Health insurance per person was, I think, sixty-three hundred last year.
Sixty-five hundred, sixty-seven thousand, maybe, yeah.
Okay, so theoretically, we provided an individual with a sixty-five hundred dollar raise.
I think we budgeted sixty-three hundred for it, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's copay, that's on health, health.
Again, they're elected officials. The taxpayers are paying their insurance premium. Do we want to keep providing raises on top of more and more taxpayers' dollars covering elected official benefits?
And that's something that I feel...
To me, that's a disservice to employed employees.
Harry was saying something.
I think our future budget, we can have this discussion in onus, um, and compare, do comparables as what you're trying to do, but if it's already been approved by, A, the voters, and the last board, and it was line item, that's what I, why I asked the question, I did to verify that it was actually already an approved thing and voted by our voters.
We are not bound.
I understand, but not bound, but...
But you keep going back to, oh, we have to because it was passed. No, we don't have to.
No, he didn't say we had to.
He's recommending that we do, because it was passed before, and he's recommending that we don't make a change.
At this time, but moving forward, we can take and do onus and look at all these things. When we are supposed to sit down and do the budget for that.
I, I just have a, I, I'm sorry, but I just, you know, I'm looking out for the taxpayers. I think it's a disservice to taxpayers.
There was a question to me that I asked that.
I mean, we've got, we, we want to increase the treasurer's salary to... We want to increase the treasurer's salary, who won't give the EIN number to the town clerk. Okay, the EIN number, a number that belongs to the town. So I just have to do that.
You're switching, you're switching issues.
You're adding too much stuff to this motion.
If I could say about the taxpayers, I think the proposal, or what you're suggesting, is moving money from one bucket to another, it doesn't save the taxpayers. What you're saying is we want to, what you want to do is increase this budget at the expense of these budgets for the same amount.
So, when we go, when we enter, when we start doing the next budget, we can, we can discuss changes to proposals. I mean, we can discuss that then.
To me, that's the right, that's the right, uh, that's the right approach. Um, Pauline, you're a hundred percent right that we have the authority to do it, but I don't think, I think what you're hearing is there's not appetite to do it.
That, I have the appetite to do it, so you guys vote how you want, I'll vote how I want. And that is how it is.
Then if there's no further discussion...
I have further discussion, if we're going to provide raises, then we decrease the amount of, uh, premium that we're paying for their insurance. Maybe instead of the taxpayers covering sixty-five percent of the insurance benefits for the two elected officials, maybe we split it with them and we each pay fifty percent of that sixty-five, which would be thirty-two and a half.
I'm sorry, I totally disagree with you. I just, it's health insurance, she has the hours, she is, I just don't understand why you're going back to this. I, I think we should motion to approve this.
We already have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. If there's no additional information to be added, then I appreciate your input, if the rest of the board, is the rest of the board ready to vote?
Yes.
I am. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Alright. And our guest has still not arrived yet, unless he's sitting outside waiting.
Well, good, well, he's not here yet. Michael, you want to grab your laptop and we'll fix that policy? I'd like to make a proposal that we schedule another policy working meeting so that we can get these policies finished up, especially the code of ethical conduct one.
Okay.
Seeing they're so time-consuming.
Do you have a date in mind, by chance?
I don't know. Do we have that meeting next Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, Board of Civil Authority.
Not on Wednesday, right, Harry?
That's what, Mon...
Which policy, man?
The procedures one? Oh, here, can I have your laptop?
What was Monday's meeting, again, I'm sorry?
The Board of Civil Authority.
That's what I thought.
Five thirty. Right?
Yep.
So any day next week after five-thirty.
Good.
Can I take your little thumb drive out for your mouse?
Yeah, if you need to temp early, but you have, it's over there.
Pauline, I think you're going to be in town by then?
I can be, um, six o'clock is easier. Wednesday nights are bad for both of us, because we have late meetings, but, um, Tuesday or one, Tuesday or Thursday next week after five-thirty would be fine.
Tuesday's the thirteenth, Thursday's the sixth.
I'm good with whatever. Thirteenth and fifteenth.
Which day are we?
I don't care.
The thirteenth at six?
Okay.
Tuesday the thirteenth?
That works.
I think right now that would work for me.
Yep.
I know you're putting, but I'm all over time, too, so...
And it's for the ethics?
Well, to, to make sure I'm out in time, I can go in earlier.
Ethics, policy, and procedure.
To work on policies.
I know, but specific, do we know?
Uh, well, right now, the ethics policy, um...
The trail policy.
Internal control policy.
We just passed that one.
I was gonna say, I don't think we're gonna be able, depending on how long we're gonna be here, I don't know, are we gonna hit them all, or do you want to just pick one and hammer that down?
Let's pick one, keep it realistic.
The internal controls policy was wrong. Um, I think those were the last two. And then, we need to have a discussion, because the VLCT came out with a whole slew of, um, financial policies that town should have.
Do they have recommendations they put out?
They do, I printed them today, because it was quite surprising.
Like entirely new or just updates?
Uh, no, these, they just wrote them all, um...
So, from the VLCT for financial policy, internal control, ethics...
I don't think we'll be writing them, but we should talk about them.
Finance, page and resources, conflict of interest, ethical conduct model policy, social media, I just did model policy search on VLCT.
Oh, you're right.
Okay.
Um, it's actually, you have to go to their financial tab, and it's a whole list, Bob.
Which one do we wanna try to nail down for that meeting on the thirteenth? Cause I don't think if we put, I was gonna say, I don't think we're gonna get to them all if we put like six of them on there.
And then, let's also try to do the social media policy and get that one done.
Okay, so ethics and social media?
Cause Bob, you pretty much have that one, right?
The, I'm sorry.
The social media one? Pretty much have that one all set?
No, yeah, not the social media, you mean the website.
Web, yeah, website, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
We have, we've, we've already passed the social media, those are not the same.
Okay, thank you, they are different, okay.
So web policy.
The social media policy is more about how we conduct our Facebook or Twitter if we have a town account.
Okay.
All right, so then, uh, are we in agreement then, we'll do ethics and web policy as a workshop on the thirteenth, six o'clock?
Oh, good.
Then, if Linda would be ever so kind as to warn that when the time comes?
Okay, so which one, are you, you want me to just go work on policies?
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't know if you have to list out specifically what ones we're working on.
Should we make it specific so we don't go off topic?
Unless you want to, just kidding.
I'm not opposed to making it specific.
Let's keep it specific. We were good the last time we did the policies, you didn't come, no.
So let's make it specific then. That way, we don't, we don't...
What's your policy?
Code of Ethics and the Website Policy.
The Web Policy, yep.
Can I ask where these are coming from? I mean, they're all corporate policies.
I'm, I'm sorry, what, you mean the ones coming from VLCT or the...
Or is that just the header, these headers all say, uh...
It's just a header.
It's a COO, um...
It's just a header.
Somebody's name that we haven't, don't recognize, and that it's corporate compliance, it's the department.
It's just a header, Bob, it's a, it's a formatted...
No, I understand, but the, there's, there's data in the header.
Yeah, cause I copied and pasted it out of another, I, I saved the, I saved, I saved the template, yeah, cause it was already formatted.
All right. That's fair, makes sense.
Yeah.
I just realized what you were talking about, the whole prepared by?
Yeah, it's, and it's a COO.
I hadn't even noticed that, cause on the, on the first one, it says Marlena Pallone.
Yeah.
And so I didn't even look at the, uh, the headers on the next pages, but you're right.
The headers on page two are separate headers, so they have to change both, but those are just drafts. Where the heck is it?
Good catch.
So Bob, you've got VLCT's website up?
I do.
If you can go to, I think it's resources, I wanna say it's under like the MAC resources. And if you type in model control policy, if you type in that, it'll bring up a page...
Well, hang on, under resources, I've got resource library, municipal directory, bookstore, newsletter, grants and funding.
Can you turn it this way a little bit so I can see the headers? Go to municipal assistance.
Municipal directory?
To the left, to the left.
Oh, here, municipal assistance.
Click on...
Municipal topics, member inquiry, professional services, MAC, on-site training...
No emails from our special guest on whether or not he's gonna be later.
Publications and resources.
Yeah, check there.
Cell phone, cellular tech...
And then, in the search box, type in model control policy.
Don't think I have this subtle information, I just talked to him via email.
Model internal control policy. It'll take you to a page that has some links on it, and then you wanna click on the link that says something about financial, something or other?
If you'll excuse me, I'm gonna look out and see if he's out in the park.
Internal financial control.
Yep, click on that, and that's gonna bring you to a list.
This one, right here.
Oh, that's the, I can't see.
And scroll down.
That's you.
I think so.
You want this, right, internal financial controls, check, it's a checklist, it's not a policy.
Um, click on that. Okay, nope. Go back. It was one of the other links, and it brings up a list.
Unidentified vehicles out there.
There's a PDF, and if you click on it, but it brings up a list of like ten or twelve financial-specific policies, and it has to do with a petty cash policy, um...
And we need to have all of these.
Invoicing policies.
I would say we concentrate on the...
They literally just came out with this.
Let's concentrate on the ones that we're required to have by law.
That we don't already have.
That we don't already have. Cause we're getting, I think we're getting lost out in the weeds, and we need to concentrate on town business.
What you guys seem to be forgetting is that that is town business based on Ron's feedback from his audit last year. If you read, if you read the audit report and his findings, many of his findings were the lack of policies, and many of the policies VLCT just created to help out municipalities cover those items. So that's why Jill pointed me there.
What I'm saying is, let's get the ones that were required to have by law right now, and then we can start, make a list, discuss priorities, and then just hammer one at a time. I'm not saying don't do them, I'm just saying we need to make sure we're not focused entirely on that loose side of everything else that's going on.
So, this is what it said, so the, the copy that we got did not get printed. So, in the policy, under meetings, regularly scheduled meetings shall take place at a specific time at the panel, town office, or designated location. Members of the body must notify the town administrator, administrator secretary, or chair in a later than twenty-four hours prior to the warm meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so then, so then B says meetings will have a hard stop at nine PM. Meetings may extend until ten BM by a, ten PM by a majority vote, or until eleven PM by a supermajority vote, that's what you asked me to add.
Yes.
Okay.
I remember asking.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, but wasn't there, didn't we talk about public, um, comment being...
Okay, hold on, let me, let me accept this cha- let me accept that change.
Right.
Okay, let me accept that, cause that's gonna be in a different location. Okay, so, accept that.
So, I'm sorry, Liz, what were you saying?
The public comment, I thought we, was it three min-?
Three minutes per person, yes, so let's see if it did that.
Unless they...
Unless we give, yeah. Cause I think that was also gonna be depend on how many people were here, if we have a packed house, we gotta abide by the time limit.
That, if they pre-gave us an information that we may, we, we'll do a adjusted agenda for that information.
Yep.
As I recall, the feedback wasn't, was that it was a general guideline, and it's the chair will always have the information for somebody.
I personally am reluctant to really cut people off, I mean, I know I have before. But if, if it's relevant and it's, it's moving and flowing and it's not become repetitive, then, for me, I'm okay with letting people have their voice.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's in here, okay. So, all meetings of the body are meetings of the public, and we shall, for a reasonable or immediate stress of feelings about matters of service by the body, as long as the body is making a reasonable comment. Comment by public members of the body must be addressed to the chair as a whole, and members of the body announced by the speaker, members of the public state their names, honorable mention.
I just remember talking about it, I thought we were gonna put something in about your work.
Hold on, there's quite a bit in this section.
I didn't find it, there's a whole slew of them.
Member of the public has already spoken.
Financial policies and motion, and all of those.
Okay, no, we didn't put it in. So, members of the body...
Or just copy and paste and adopt wholesale.
Oh, this is what we put in.
If you're taking a public policy, there's very little discussion on our part, we, we, I'm always comfortable with the VLCT.
So this is...
Hello, sir.
Hi.
Hey, Bob.
Hello, hi, Bob, this is what we said, the chair may at his discretion, when it works. Okay, all right.
All right, so, our special guest is here, so I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session for legal. We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session for legal, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.